And the first item on the agenda is to elect officers. So the first office that we need to elect is the office for chair.
Nominate Jay.
Third.
Okay, so Jay, is that something you'd be interested in?
I'm happy to do it again, yes.
Okay, everyone's in favor?
Aye.
Jay opposed? All right, so Jay, go ahead, you're next.
All right, next up is the nomination of the vice chair. And I'll nominate Tammy, second.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of Tammy? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Tammy is vice chair.
I'll nominate Kevin as secretary.
Kevin, you willing to do that?
You take the minutes in non-public. Pretty much.
I would nominate Ashley.
There you go. I'll nominate Joe.
I'll nominate Jasmine.
I'll do it, I don't mind.
Somebody second it quick.
All right, we have Jasmine's nomination. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and Matt carries.
We talked about it before the meeting, I wouldn't even notice any of it, though.
No, you're good.
I think that's all we need to do. For the three, okay. We can do the, I guess, the rest of the, that sort of organizational stuff, like the committees and stuff. Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, we're gonna do the committee, it will go down there when it says committee reports.
Okay. Okay, yep.
Committee assignments, assignments requiring order.
Yes.
There you go, yep.
Perfect. All right, then, first up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from March 8.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 8 meeting as presented.
Thank you, Tammy. Joe, any further discussion on those? All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Extentions? And that motion carries. Next up is the approval of the annual meeting minutes from March 11th.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that?
Awesome job.
Very thorough.
Fantastic.
All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? And that carries. Then correspondence, I didn't see any. I didn't get any this week.
There's a NCS newsletter in the, and I'll speak on that when it comes up.
Okay. Business administrators' report.
Yep, as you can see, a number manifest out there, and I did Casey in the main office last week, so I went through that process with him. Pretty much checks every week, whether it's how payable or whatnot. At least two board signatures to produce the checks each week, so. There's a lot there. There's also the MS-22, which is the report of appropriations voted at the annual meeting. The S is signed by each board member, sort of this recap. So it was approved, goes to the DRA and their assistants. So it ties out what was budgeted and all that. So that's over there for the signatures. Just a couple of things we're working on now that the annual meeting is over. While we have been working on this one, we've been working on the safety grants that we got. And that's a matter of entryway here at the elementary school, doing doors and windows for the middle high school. We have been working on that. We put it out too big, we have a walk through tomorrow. Because that money basically has to be encumbered before the end of June and then spent by the end of this year. That project is scheduled to be done this summer.
Is that walk through with the?
With the different contractors that have, yeah.
And the vest, is that including the vestibule there?
Yeah.
So they're gonna?
After the elementary school finished.
Gonna do that, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the, sort of, the safety type of stuff that we were gonna do a couple of years ago, but it was too expensive.
So we'll have to do that and cover that next month.
Yeah, so. Yeah, first maybe, so we're voting on those then.
And we encumber that by just accepting the bid and?
Yeah, we just need to accept the bids and then, yeah, so we draw up the contracts, so that's all. Pretty much encumbered at that point, so.
Right.
Perfect, perfect.
Yeah, June 30th is when we, the grant has to be encumbered or is obligated by.
Gotcha.
The rules of that grant, and then the money, I think, has to be spent by the end of.
The fiscal year?
End of 2023.
Sorry, the calendar year?
Yeah, yeah.
End of the calendar year.
Anyway, we're right on the timelines.
Good.
So we're working on that, and also working on the finance rates for the middle high school. HSHAP project, the bond there, and I put out a couple requests to banks, and their rates are still pretty high. And the advantage of going to a bank, I guess, versus the bond bank is that you don't have a, one of those ones, but it's only a five years old. We're looking at five years of financing, and I think. Again, the bond bank rates, based on their last sale, are gonna come in less than what I'm getting from the banks right now. But still.
But if we do it in phases, at the, going to a bank, we could borrow this much now to do this phase, and then this much more then, and not pay interest on the whole thing from the get-go. I'm sorry?
It's only 430,000.
Right, but still, I mean, if you're.
A lot of years, yeah, so I guess we can look at all that.
You know, the first phase is 200,000, then you don't have to borrow that for the first year. And then the additional after, so that.
Yeah, it's based on what we.
Depending on how far off the interest rates are, it may make more sense. Sure.
I mean, I don't really know what the bond bank rates are until the bond sale in July.
Right.
But we have to make a commitment.
Prior to that, yeah.
Prior to that.
Are we anticipating that this is gonna be dominant phases?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have that, we'll talk about that.
Is it the balance report?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll talk about that.
Never mind.
Bulk of it, we don't.
I did, Judy, I read it, the whole thing, let's say.
And other things we're looking at right now is we're, I think, at the next meeting, we'll bring forward the lunch contract and pricing for next year like we normally do. The other thing we did earlier than we normally do, because the timing was right, is we just locked in our oil rates for next year.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so I think this year we're paying, we 80 a gallon, but we got 290 a gallon.
Fantastic.
We're budgeting 450.
Fantastic.
We're in a good position for that.
Yeah.
We also locked in some electric rates, and everything was below what we budgeted, so.
Fantastic.
That's all I have here.
Thank you, Dr. McGinn, superintendent's report.
Okay, before I forget, I just want to remind everybody of the major dates that will be coming up in June. And June 9th is your graduation date. June 19th is continuation. And June 20th is the last day of school. The staff and students, and let's go have a nice show.
We won't.
I don't think it's raining right now, we're good. But we'll be all set with that, so.
It's gonna rain hot water.
I had said, I don't remember if I said it to you or the staff, but I said June 21st, I had said before. So we counted out all the days, and that was June 21st.
No, I was wondering. Why don't we do continuation the Monday after graduation anymore? We used to do graduation on Friday, and then the following Monday did continuation. That way, the eighth graders could use what was left over of decorations from the seniors in the gym, and it was still all set up, chairs were still set up, everything was ready to go. It was not an extra setup or takedown. Why don't we do that anymore? I mean, they still had classes, they still went to classes after that, but the ceremony was on Monday night after Friday night's graduation, so that.
Well, I will tell you that the ceremony this year, the students have voted to do it outside. So I don't know necessarily if the A3 continuation is gonna be yet, so.
Right, right.
We asked about that with some of the middle school team. The answer was the kids just don't show up after that.
Oh, interesting.
That's why.
Interesting, well, I know that seniors wouldn't, but doesn't make sense that the eighth graders wouldn't.
Yeah.
Doesn't, but that's what happens.
But also, you know, we have three more days added on at the end of this year.
Right, right. But I mean, it was just for the convenience of the janitorial staff and having the decorations stayed up and.
I mean, whatever, yeah.
You know, the ceremony was there, so that, you know, if God forbid it rains and it has to be inside, then they don't have to take the chairs down and put them away, and then a week later, put them all back up again, and.
All that stuff kind of goes pretty quickly, and lots of people.
Right. It was also way more entailed when Louise did it too, with numbering of the tables and the tickets and whatnot too, so. She was fantastic with it, yeah. Okay, thank you, I just was wondering why it was different, that's all.
So in your blue packet, you did get some information that is about board members', board members' contact information. And we typically, when we send out the information to the board, the SAU will send it to your Linwood email address.
See, my Linwood email address is still empty.
I know, we'll have to work on that one. I know if it doesn't work, I always send it to the board. I just do send it double anyway.
I don't usually get the stuff that Jay sends out, so I don't know why that doesn't even get to me.
I don't think I've ever gotten anything from Jay.
That might be intentional.
Straight to the spam folder.
No, that's what I mean, sometimes, for whatever reason, it doesn't come through to my school.
Now, your Linwood one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that'll get to that.
I'll have to come in and see Trey again.
Right, I know, but sometimes if it doesn't get used, it shuts itself down.
Yeah, mine's, well, I couldn't get in, couldn't get in, and then I did get in once, and it was empty. And then couldn't get in again, and then Trey got me in, but I couldn't sign back in again after that, and I don't, I just don't.
But you still get your information, because we give it to you.
Right, it goes to my Gmail, so I'm fine, yeah.
So if anyone does not get the information, if I'm sending you information email, I typically text to you all. So you'll get a text from me saying, check your email, or, because if I had a document that I'll have to look at or something like that. I'll do that, it doesn't happen to us.
Yeah.
If something happens during the year, or something's going on, you know, we had a, you know, not, I'm not, I'm, like a fire drill type of thing that was not planned, we usually, I usually text the board and whatever. It's okay, it just went off, or, you know, something. But we do have those from time to time. So also, the other thing is, is that you have specific roles and responsibilities to do. So if you have any, look through it. If you have any questions on anything, then let me know, tonight for the board, or if, I mean, everybody here knows everything. But Casey, if you have anything, clearly, we should sit down anyway and just filter some things, just so you have the big picture. And this type of meeting, any, we have these meetings, this is exactly how we do it. You know, it's always the same, same agenda, same, you know, process. Any training support we'd want to go on? You could go online with the New Hampshire School Board Association, because they have a member of that. And you could listen to any of the trainings that they have, they're really good. We listen to them at the SAU, but you can also listen to them at home like that. If you don't have a good connection, you can come to the SAU and do them, do use the conference room, do them. If there's any better paid trainings, you just let Sharon know, and she'll, she'll set you up for that, when you guys don't pay for those. So some of them are really interesting, could be a good idea. I think everything else is gonna fit in with the agenda, so we don't have to keep going. So you can go ahead, John. Yeah, everything else will fit in.
Okay. All right, Mr. Cribbinow.
I gave you a principal's report, I was going to ask, I pushed last week, of a town, so I didn't get it, so I just kind of placed it on the seat area, but I just wanted to remind you that the presentations of learning are April 19. We have a great deal of elementary students, I think the vast majority already signed up. Okay, sorry. Okay, I'll go louder, I can put on a loud voice. All right, our presentations of learning are April 19. We have a great number of elementary students signed up. We have a good number of middle school and high school people signed up, and we're looking forward to that taking place in the next couple of weeks. Elementary school is running things a little bit different, they're actually spreading those days out. But for the majority of them, they'll be held on the 19th. Want to recognize our New Hampshire student athletes. In order to qualify for that, you have to have a B+ or equivalent grade point average throughout their high school career, and currently be active in at least two NHIA organized sports. And again, we'll look at Shannon Drappo, Brady Morris, Cohen Supple, Cam Clermont, Cam Manning, Anna Harvey, and Dylan Motzuluski, I just want to recognize some nice outstanding effort.
Absolutely.
By those senior students. Mr. Robert here is officially now the banker. He is getting lots of grants from us, and doing a great job. We're gonna set up a teller in his office.
Fantastic.
So he was able to secure a literacy grant of $25,000, and you can read kind of the description of what that could take place in. Also, a beyond school enrichment grant, which is gonna look at working at the students in this summer regarding STEM and programming robotics, and we'll do two separate weeks, one for K through 2 and one for 3 through 6. And the complete details aren't absolutely finalized, but almost there. We'll have some year-end school concerts coming up, please be aware, and look out for those. Teachers are continuing to talk in staff meetings around tier-two instruction, and what that looks like within their classroom. And then also attached to this, we'd like to invite you all to come participate and see what's going on. But we want to do like a cultural awareness and customs and traditions to different families and stuff, and people in the community from Lincoln Woodstock. We have a whole bunch of people coming on May 4th to celebrate a tasting of the world's foods festival, and that's gonna actually be held in here. For some reason, we have electricity in the crop plots or stuff like that hooks up nicer, so it'll be held here. But it's been organized a lot by Ms. Krill and some other teachers, and it's, we're really looking forward to this. The public that is participating is really eager to want to come in and help us out with this. And then Jason, Money Man, and Robert, talk about literacy night.
Sure, last week, we held our literacy night here at the elementary school. About 100 people attend, both students, parents, family members, younger siblings, and so on. We were fortunate enough to be able to bring in Eric Pinder, who is a local New Hampshire author that's written several children's books, puts up a burlong. So he came down, did a great presentation for the students, started the day, broken up kind of a younger and older, the process of creating books, and even talks about kind of how difficult it can be, and the excitement, and kind of that whole perseverance piece that kind of goes along with being an author. And then he stayed in the evening night as well. Students had the opportunity to go around, listen to several students volunteer from the middle high school, they read stories kind of throughout the evening, we did a little vacation there. We were fortunate enough to have these cookies and hot cocoa at the end, kids wore their PJs, overall, just kind of a great night. You know, it kind of rounded out that, those evening events, where we had the math night earlier in the year as well. Been really great to have so many people involved and that game to participate in those just different experiences. So very well received, well attended, and looking forward to using that as kind of a jumping off point going into next year. Mr. Cribbinow, you know, mentioned the literacy grant. Literally, the email came through at about 3:30, 4 o'clock today, which is pretty exciting. And that money really goes to not only the school, but it's really about building that culture of literacy for school, for the community, it's a partnership with the Lincoln and the Woodstock libraries. So we're looking forward to getting that off the ground and put those plans in place as we move forward this spring, so.
Fantastic.
So that literacy grant is outside of literacy.
Yes, yep, it's due to Children's Literacy Foundation, based out of Waterbury, Vermont. Schools apply, they do target schools that have higher percentages of free to reduced large population, recognizing that it's just a critical piece to jumpstart, you know, the love of writing, the love of reading, and so on. As it's noted in the notes that were provided, you know, every kid over the course of the year will get 10 books that they will choose, they're all high interest, they're all high, you know, they're really great opportunities, stories, that they'll be able to contribute to their own, you know, their own personal collection at home. There'll be some family nights that happen as a result of this. Yes, speakers, or writing workshop, there's just a ton of different opportunities there. Some mini grants available for classroom teachers and things like that. So again, there's a lot of different options, we get to pick a handful, probably two handfuls, but all one of five schools in New Hampshire that are good.
Fantastic.
Next up is the committee report, so we didn't really have any. We do have some policies on for second reading, the ones that we had sort of looked at prior to the annual meeting. Yep, so it's DN and IHBAAA. So these are just on for second reading, I don't know if anyone has any further comment or questions on it before we, before we take a vote, and. So just for Casey, because he's the only one that wasn't here, the school board policy, DN. We were changing, we changed a bit of the language here, because it was an opportunity to, or we're proposing a change to the language. Essentially, there's four different means of disposing of, you know, material that has, maybe has some value, but is sort of obsolete for what we're doing here at the school. And the sort of items in question were some of our old Chromebooks that are given to students. There was an opportunity for some of those Chromebooks to be donated to the seniors, I think at the senior center over in Woodstock as well, with the idea being that students would then help the seniors sort of interact with the seniors in conference, to figure that out and use the technology as an opportunity.
And earn community service hours, yeah.
But the policy wasn't really, didn't, wouldn't have allowed that in that manner. So what it originally prescribed was in basically having anything that was being disposed of, be disposed of in this particular order, so selling to the hospital, then donating items, and then for giving to the citizens, and then referring them. What we've done is essentially just changed it to the board, the board votes on authorizing the disposal by one or more of the five, and so that allows us to approve the donation of those too. Yep. So that's what, and it went to policies go to first reading, where we have a discussion about them, we make any changes, then they can easily come back at the next meeting for a final vote, so that's what this is. I guess, and I, is this a totally new policy?
No, that just changed, the law changed from 21 to 22.
Oh, that's right.
So we just had to change it to from 21 to 22, where they age out of.
Right, so you see at the top, in the, the other policy, IHBAA.
To go with the law.
Yeah, they changed, they changed the obligation of the district to educate students to the age of 22, so just, we had originally 21, our policy said 21, so just changed to 22. So that's one that we don't really have a whole lot of discussion to.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve policies DN and IHBAAA.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? And that motion carries.
And now that that policy has changed, can I make a motion that we donate those Chromebooks?
You can, when we get there.
I want to do it now.
Tammy, did you read the agenda?
No. Fine, I'll wait.
Okay, so, so the, everyone got a copy, the next is business requiring board action. I think everyone got a copy in their email, at least of all of the board ethics policies. And then there's a, in your folders, there's an ethics policy sign-off that we need to sign, and now you just hand it to me, and oh. Sign them all, get them submitted. Thank you. The committee assignments, what is up next? There's a, the old standing committees and the other committees, there's a list in the, in the folder, I think on the left side of the folder. So the big ones, obviously, facilities policy.
I'll start the conversation by saying that I've been on policy for six years, so I'm happy to let someone else do it if they are interested. And I'm okay with staying on policy. Do we need three?
Two and three, but no.
So does anybody else want policy?
It is interesting.
It's not one of the favorite committees.
Well, can you be here early for every single meeting?
Yeah, I mean.
Right, but then you're also on facilities, so that means you'd be here early at every single meeting.
Yeah, don't do that, though.
No. Well, we'll go with two, and if we think we need a third, then we'll revisit. Does everybody know that?
Stand in if it's a issue.
You guys breeze through that stuff anyway, you're good.
We'll go back up to facilities, though.
So facilities, it was you, Kevin, and Brian, so we had, you want to stay on that? Is that something you'd like to do too? Okay. So Casey.
I already wrote Casey.
And. We usually do have three.
Yeah.
On facilities?
Yeah.
So these, there's a lot of.
Joe, Kevin, and Casey?
Yeah.
And then me and Ashley. I'll stay on transportation. It's not a whole lot to it, we don't have buses anymore on, so we just have, we have the tractor and the truck and the van, and yeah.
We have negotiations again this year, don't we?
Every year.
Teachers.
Every year.
There's CBA or negotiations.
Yeah.
I'm happy to stay on negotiations.
I am too, I like it too.
Okay.
What about transportation, do we want a second one on there, or do you want me to do all of that on the stuff? Joe, perfect.
We don't need a buzzer up, we can skip that one.
We need support staff negotiations instead of teachers, so we'll just swap that.
It says it on this.
Oh, I'm going with the last one, sorry, got you.
So we can, Tammy, you can be our New Hampshire School Board Association.
I'm fine with that.
You seem to really enjoy that conference.
It gives me a shopping day in conference.
Professional developments.
Fine to stay.
Okay.
You still on that one?
Pass it. Technology?
I'd be more than happy to give it up, because I really stink at it. I think Kevin will be much better at it than I was thinking.
How often do you need?
A couple times.
I'm happy to do that.
And I think, I think you would understand a lot more than I do, Jay.
Well, aren't those like the middle of the day, though? Yeah, that's the reason I can't do that. I'd rather be on. It's usually like. For everyone that doesn't work at a school, yeah, yes. Yeah.
They usually give you plenty of notes.
Plenty of notes.
And you know, it's not often, right? Yeah.
Risk management.
I could stay with risk management, like four times a year, so.
Health of communities.
I'm happy to stay.
Speak up if you're interested in being on any of these.
I'm risk management, Jasmine's staying on.
On health communities, did you want wellness back too, Joe?
Sure.
Food service.
I'll stay there.
I think emergency.
Casey's on sick bank.
You want to do emergency?
Casey?
So Casey's gonna do emergency management, and then sick bank. Two?
Casey's doing sick bank?
No, he's gonna do emergency management. We can sign him up for sick bank too, but you gotta wait till the night when he's not here.
I'll do it as well, if we need to. Who's doing it?
You and Joe.
I'll sign up for an extra one since I backed out of policy. Thanks, guys. Six years is the.
So Jasmine's last. All right, I think that's everything on the list, anyway. Next up is the goal-setting meeting date.
That's just the board meeting schedule, it's a new packet.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the one that we post, that's the schedule we post online, so that we. And that's, that's the one that we post. That's the schedule we post online so that we can follow the process that we need to follow. And then there are times when it has to be changed.
Yeah.
So it's kind of the board usually determines if we have to change it. So that's it. Go ahead, goal setting.
I was going to say, based on the sort of discussion that we had regarding the goal setting meetings and sort of what we want to get out of that, it's probably going to, it's something that we're going to be able to get done in one sitting.
Might not. I didn't know if you wanted to, thinking about that, you know, if you wanted it, right now you don't have any policies. You're not going to have a pack of policies until September.
Yeah.
Okay, so you do have that hour.
Right.
So you could start working on it. Someone can, people could be on a committee.
Yeah.
You know, and just do it an hour and then the next meeting do an hour.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so like meet at 5:30.
5:30.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, you know, my takeaway from the last meeting was that we're all sort of looking for something to be a little more specific, measurable, and not necessarily broad strokes, but sort of specific item, action items that we can, that we can do. So I know one of them, one of the big ones was getting the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, sort of at least a draft of it so that we can keep moving on that. And I know that there's been some work done on that to date.
I've got a ton of notes, but I haven't really put anything officially together.
Yeah. I'm just thinking like.
That's back on my radar.
It, it's, it's not the type of thing that I think that we can, are going to be doing in like one, one hour session. So maybe a couple, or we could put, we can schedule one for maybe one of the dates that should be policy coming up in the spring as a sort of starter, and then, and then, you know, decide when it would be good to have the next meeting. All right, so what about May 24th? Is that, do we know? That's the second. Okay, so it'll be the first meeting. Okay, so yeah. Okay. So that would be at 5:30?
Yeah.
And if you could, Sharon, just another reminder, like with your, with the packet that we just that, that we're doing that, just that we know everybody's busy, so. Thank you. Staff nominations, recommendations, resignations? What's that?
Okay.
Full lists?
Yeah. I just have to go into non-public or other, you know, two other.
Okay.
So, but that's the list.
This is the nominations list?
For the certified educators.
Okay. So this is.
And you have support, and you have support staff at the next meeting? Support staff at the next meeting? No, in May. Okay, okay, thank you. I thought you said she may, like she may have it. Never mind.
These will go out by April 15th. And then they will be required to return them. And teachers will be required to return them by the end of April, beginning of May. So by the time they come back, they're vacationed.
So what, what action do we need to take at this point? Do we need to just approve this list?
Yeah, you would say as presented.
Okay, as presented. And then you said there's further discussion in non-public tonight?
I need to have a question about somebody on the list, so before we do that, I'd like to go to non-public, right? Before we approve this.
Okay, so, so we can do the non-public and then take a vote after. I guess we'll discuss that further. And now we can talk about the proposed donation of Chromebooks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal to donate the Chromebooks to the two senior housing folks in Lincoln and Woodstock.
Can well, let's do a second.
Lincoln Green and the.
Second.
Burton, Ray Burton Center.
Yeah.
And the community center for the seniors.
Now, if we, if we do it that way, we already have a second on it. If we do it that way, do we have to give all of them to them, or can we leave it open to them and play along?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, and I just wanted to sort of, before we make a vote on it, just can somebody just give us the, and for the people listening, what the breakdown or what the plan is?
Okay, so, so what I have right now is that the plan is to take the ones that are no longer able to be used at the school because they're outdated, and those will be prepped and stripped and prepped for the ones, and then we'll just send them, send each a group. And then after we send a group of them to each of the places, then we will have students for, as part of their community service. And they will help with the, how to work the computers and how to, you know, do all that stuff, some training sessions.
And is there a sense of how many, how many we're talking about?
But again, it's based on their need.
Yeah. Okay. And, and I know that, I just wanted to include the information about, you know, why these things, we're going to do these things. And it sounded, when speaking with Trey, was that, that they don't have the updated security features necessary to comply with the statutes regarding student data security. And so we, so it's not that they are a piece of junk. They're still using the machines that'll be good for purposes that they're looking for, but they're just not something that we can continue to use here.
Right.
Okay, so I, I guess that maybe what we should do is, the motion should be to, you know, give the administration authority to donate, you know, the unused obsolete hardware in, in, to the senior centers and the community center. That way it's, we're not just saying like, give it all away. We're saying as you, as, as it's, right, as, as you see fit, as, as it, as it makes sense for the program.
Okay. Works for me, yeah.
Okay, so, I guess I'd.
Give the administration the authority as they see fit.
Did you have to redraw the first one?
No, just amend them.
Yeah, I'll just, we'll just, we'll, we'll call that an amendment. So all those in favor of amending motion?
Aye.
And then all those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
And then opposed, extensions, and that amended motion carries.
Perfect.
Okay. New business, James Playhouse uses the back field.
Yes.
Okay, so typically at the moon, there is a summer, summer presentation of Wizard of Oz, I believe it is. And so there's going to be construction going on up there, and they had asked if they could use the field instead. And we brought them out there. We showed them what we have. We showed them the available hook up for electricity and what they'll need, and it seems to comply with everything they need. There's not going to be a big major stage. Apparently it's kind of like just held in the open. There's no seating involved except for that, that is brought by the the people in the audience. Yeah. So we thought it would be a good opportunity for us to work with them since they're working with us for our evacuation.
Plan?
And they thought that it would be some of the space needed. I can't remember the weekend, but it's been done.
Yeah, after the Fourth of July, yeah.
Yeah.
Is this for just one year, they anticipate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then they should be able to go back. Gotcha.
Just like anybody else that uses, we don't have any liabilities.
Yeah, they're going to provide the insurance and stuff for us.
What about food and beverage?
Food and beverage, they do not provide. I guess Moon was typically the one who provided those things. And so what we're going to do is we're going to reach out to our different class, classes in the high school, different grade level, levels. If they want to provide at that time, they'll give an opportunity to another fundraiser.
Oh, fantastic.
And obviously, they'll all go on.
Yeah.
So, so in Moon, that's typically something they presented, but they're, they're really going to try to make this really family friendly. And so we can provide if we choose.
Do we need like an official vote on that, or is it just something that?
Well, yeah, why don't we do that? Because the other one we did take a vote on.
Oh, right, right, right. I'll make a motion that we allow James Playhouse to hold their outside play that second weekend or after the first. You have the dates, July 6th, 7th, and 8th, for one, just this year.
One more, there is a rain, well.
Oh, yeah, rain date of the night.
And they'll probably come in the fifth to set.
To set up.
Yeah.
Yeah, fifth through the night, yeah.
Okay, so second about Joe. Any further discussion on that?
It's in the comment that, you know, James Playhouse is good to us. We've had the
poetry out loud.
Poetry out loud. They've done, included the kids with the, the plays that they've done over there, and we've had other things done over there too, I'm trying to think now.
So one of the things too is they're going to try to look at, like people at the school, kids who attend the school, giving them a reduced rate as well.
Oh, nice. Right? Fantastic. I mean, they've, they've been a good neighbor. I think we need to be a good neighbor in return. Yeah.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, and that motion carries. Next is SRO.
Okay, the SRO, we are in the process of, we do have an MOU. We are in the process of the attorney present right now. And as soon as you announce it, then we will move forward with setting up the meeting.
And is that something, in the MOU, is that something the board is going to get a chance to look at?
Oh, yeah, you will get to look at it as well.
And then it'll go to Linkity and then they'll send it on to their union, correct?
Sorry.
Do they have a copy of it, or we're finalizing it first?
Yeah, the chief has a copy of it.
Oh, gotcha.
And then.
So their lawyer's looking at it, our lawyer's looking at it. Gotcha, okay.
And then I just want the district's attorney.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then we'll give it back.
And what's the, what's the proposed plan for sort of the hiring committee for this person?
They will be taking some, some people from the district to be on that committee.
Yeah.
As part of the interview committee. And then they'll go through that process and then they'll hire somebody, you know, through that process.
Well, there is a, there, there are a union. The Lincoln Police Department has, is a union employee, so they have union specifications on
How they do it.
How they do it. So they have to ask within and whatnot first. So it has to be done according to their union. However, there will still be an interview process.
Right. I mean.
Even if it's from within first.
The school district will be a part of that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Process goes, it's followed, they follow the police association's process.
And, and just because somebody has union seniority or however you want to put it, doesn't mean that that has to be the one. But they would have to be included in the interview process.
Yeah, they have their own.
Right, right.
Process.
Chief did speak to me too, and he was hoping to get like administration, teachers, and kids involved.
Excellent.
So, yeah.
Excellent. Good.
SR funds?
Our SR funds, we're going to talk about the high school H-Back project. Because Harvard has a policy plan. So we put in, we put in the memo about that with DHI and the timeline, but because of some of the lead times and some of the not all of it in place by the end of the summer, which was our goal. But it will be up fully and running. So they phased it out, and even when we met the other day, this is what they originally sent us. But when we went, when we met the other day, they said it was most likely we moved up and then, you know, the worst case scenario is they finish the last pieces next summer, but they're hoping.
So this is the worst case scenario.
This is the worst case scenario.
Gotcha.
But it will be up and running and functional by the time we go back to school.
Right.
The boiler room will be done. It's, it's just the units, I think, up on the roof, which are the ventilated and we need to bring back, to explain, but I mean, I just made that too.
Doesn't affect any funding?
It doesn't affect any funding. The grant, we have some money that expires this September, under $24,000. We'll, we'll spend, we're going to spend.
Yeah, on phase one, yeah.
And then the remaining money has to be spent by September 2024.
Perfect.
This will be done by.
It'll be complete by then, yes.
It will be completed, it'll be within the grant timelines. Yeah, the, the money from the bond again, the majority of it's going to be spent by the end of this summer. Just those units.
The majority of what?
The majority, the project will be done by the end of the year.
Yeah.
But I think we all sort of, like, the vibe we were getting was that there was going to be some, always going to be some, you know, complications with timelines on getting some of this stuff, so it's not as bad as it could be.
I like that they outlined the worst case scenario.
All right. Strategic plan?
Strategic plan, and we'll be forward with that. It's going well. We're, as we move into the summer, we're going to be working on curriculum. We're working on ELA curriculum, which is English Language Arts, and we'll also be working on math curriculum at K-912.
Can I just ask a question about the calendar that we got for next year? So September 1st, the Friday, and September 4th, the Monday, are blanked out blue, and September 4th is labeled down here for Labor Day, but September 1st isn't labeled down here for anything, like given reason why we're having it on. I think we normally have two four week days. What's that?
Labor Day weekend.
Also Labor Day weekend.
Which shuts up Friday for us.
Yes. Oh, it's just not down below. I should have been saying, I got down below. I got you. Why it's up, yeah. Bonus. Just put a smiley face next to it. Yeah, no, good catch.
Is that, so that's, that is intentional, that, that, that Friday is off?
Yeah, so they start with the kids have a morning period, and then the next is a morning, and then a night.
I just want to see how many days.
Well, it looks like a three, and then a four, and then a five.
Well, it's the 28th is the first day of school.
Oh, yeah, okay. That one, that's, that's confused me twice now. Okay. But given what's happened this year with the snow, and this was like a fairly light snow year, and we've had quite a few missed snow days. And it's, I, you know, it's, the, the transportation companies are not as willing to go out when it's snowing as they used to be, I guess. So does it make sense to does it make sense to not do that, to get the days in so that we're not out at June, June 20th at the end of the year? And I understand sort of easing everybody into it, but I also know that everybody in town is annoyed that, that, you know, end of school is pushed out so far.
So the week of the 28th, start off the Friday week?
I mean, that would be the, that, that's sort of the idea that I'm floating here, and then maybe, I need some feedback from people about that. I, I just, you know, it it seems like we're just going to have, we're, we're going to have snow days. We're going to have more snow days than we, than we, than we have in the past. And that's a
So something people have to.
It's just Durham School Services, you know, doesn't want to drive in the snow.
Do you think there's more value in the first week, the fourth week, the first day? Going in, getting teachers, getting, getting wound up, and then having a few days to do things or get comfortable instead of having a good five days.
I see the validity on both sides of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely see easing the kids into it too, you know, but I'm just thinking, you know, as it is, we're looking at, the 12th is the last day of school. We don't have any snow days, right? So that's, that's reasonably early.
Yes.
But, you know, this year we had a bunch.
Well, and it stinks because our last day of school is on a Thursday, so it puts us into the next week, which is, makes it. it feel so much later, you're going through a weekend, and then you're getting out on the twentieth because of the weekend.
And then, and if we had three snow days next year, that, that would be the same situation, because it would be Thursday, Friday, and then Monday.
Yeah.
You average about three snow days, this year it was five days, we had a.
Right, we had.
But it still didn't interfere with the calendar.
Yeah. Yeah, snow days are always, you know, it's a pain in the butt, but we live in New England, and, like you said, the change in the willingness to drive and all of that's gonna shift, people are, you know, it's just something that's gonna shift, they're gonna have to.
So why is there no school Friday, March first? Am I missing something?
Teacher service, they usually isn't?
It's blue.
Winter break, February twenty-eighth to March first.
Oh, I see, okay, it's going from, gotcha, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed it. Yeah, we definitely wanna keep that day out.
Yeah. Twelfth of March is voting day.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I guess, I was sort of putting it out there, it sounds like everyone sort of feels like we should leave it as is?
It's a toss-up.
Yeah, I see both sides, and I've definitely heard positive things from students and teachers and parents about how we have like two four-week, four-day weeks, and then
bring them back gradually.
Yeah.
From that schedule.
Especially the little guys. That's the little, the little guys that, yeah. Agreed. Yeah.
All right.
Good point, though, I mean, both ends of that is a good point, so.
Maybe I'm just sensitive about it, because I've been hearing a lot of complaints about the current, the current end daycare.
Me, too. No public comment, thanks, so.
I don't see any students, and I don't see staff this evening, is there a staff update?
What about students, I thought, are we gonna get a student eventually, or?
We have, we have one.
We had one, and then it was snowing, remember, we had a snow day, well, I mean, we met, but it was horrible weather, so they didn't come.
I know it was recommended, though, we're supposed to put a policy in place for that.
We did.
We did.
I know, but we're not following it, so.
No, we are, they, so the school board, the, the student, um, the student government has elected a, a board representative from the student body, she just hasn't been able to make it to the meeting.
Okay, okay, might as well somebody come.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the last meeting we had.
There will be a student presentation, I think, at the next one, so we have, uh, some people coming to present for,
Oh, nice. Nice.
That after all, just, you gotta get a deal.
Oh, yeah, I mean, definitely, that's, that is the plan, I think it's just, hasn't been.
Is there a presentation on robotics, actually? My son was convincing me it comes up. Or next.
All right. Should it have been in consumer business, or?
The article five, we need to change, remember, we had talked about that at the meeting, there's pay for negotiations teams that don't meet all day long anymore, so that needs to be changed for next year, is that a board thing to change?
Well, I think when we start to talk about next year, I think that whole article probably should just.
Yeah. It's in the budget anyway.
I think one time we tried to, you know, take that off in the board at the time, said, no, we like, we have that on there, so people can see that, it's right out there.
I mean, either way, there.
Next year, I'm gonna put a note in next year's warrant.
Sure, perfect, I mean, I don't, I don't care either way whether it's, it's own article or not, but the, it used to be the negotiating team would take a whole day and just negotiate all day long, so the negotiating team was paid for that, now we do an hour here, hour there, so it's not a paid thing, I just wanna make sure that comes off. Exactly, you know, um, and I wanted to thank them. What an organized meeting we had, and it wouldn't have been that way without all your cheat sheets and your homework that you did for us, and I really appreciate that you do that, thank you very much. And we have several non-English-speaking students joining us next year, are we prepared for that? Non-English-speaking students?
I mean, we don't know, but that, do we?
Yeah.
So we'll be looking at that.
I, um, subbed today with two of them, it was challenging, that's why I'm bringing it up now. Yeah, I downloaded a couple of apps on my phone to help, so, wow. And there are eleven, we have eleven from the childcare center coming into kindergarten next year, it was seven, but with new students, now we're at eleven, so, yeah, that's, yeah. We might have two classes, maybe.
That's still a fairly small startup.
That's only from the childcare center town, that's not any other students that don't go to the daycare, and there are a couple of in-home daycare still in town as well, so.
We, we have fourteen that we're currently know about on our list that have received information.
Excellent.
Kindergarten registration.
Oh, good.
The eleventh and twelfth in May, and we're working on setting up those appointments for the commit, and have that opportunity, so.
That time of year, I guess, right?
Yeah. Well, I know one incoming kindergartner that is very excited and cannot wait.
All right, so, was there a staff update, they pass along anything, or? Okay. And community, Mr. Hamm, anything?
Oh, we have one comment.
Yeah.
Number two, that rattling on the fence, annoying, I thought it just. Try to resolve the rattle here, back here. Number two, I guess, I kind of must set, um, abuse world hall, that the condition of the gym floor and the lack of respect for, we had body covering to be put on the gym floor when I was on the board, to be used, and it's not being used, it's dirty, I was there at town, was at the last meeting they had there, some of the signs up, the sponsor signs were hanging crooked, it's dirty, it's not clean, and why are we not covering the floor to protect it? I virtually intended to spend all that money on that floor and cover it, and that we haven't been using.
I know there are some times that, that, uh, kids are tripping.
She just said there was some, it tripped, yeah, it was tripping on that covering.
It was tripping on, it's, I did have the company come in, when they come in and do the, uh, covering, or, or, I don't know, yeah, they doubled the, the, um, covering of it, yeah, so that it would be more protective, and it does not, so it does not, the dent, the floor does not get damaged, but until we can figure out a way so that people aren't tripping on it, and, um, use a different, you know, strategy would be the layers.
Now, I thought the floor covering, that rug thing or whatever, was only for the first few years until it, the membrane or something hardened, or, I don't know.
It could be that, so I, that's what I mean.
That wasn't what we were presenting with at the time.
I could not ask.
It was for a little while, it didn't last long.
That might be a question for.
I guess if somebody could report back to me or the board, what I guess.
Dr. McGann said she could. John, Dr. McGann said she could look into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering why I said that, I haven't seen you that.
John, thank you.
That actual part of that stand inside there.
Yeah.
It's the original unit, that, that part didn't get to walk, though.
Okay.
But it should still be.
For a million dollars, plus we have a maintenance crew, we have a contract with it.
Yeah.
Meeting and air conditioning, that's in the.
And absolutely, I mean, that is something that.
I know when I was on the board, they weren't keeping up with the cost, they were actually doing all right, on their six-month payment schedule, I don't know if that's happening again, and we can.
That right there is something.
Maybe you can look into see if by the last time they were here.
The light flickering bothers me more than the fan does, just saying. Just saying, thank you.
But that, that actually should be, uh.
Should be.
There's something here in that, that's, that's an easy thing, so that's all we gotta do is just put in a call to them.
Yeah, and I guess, I have another question for Mark.
Yes.
Then I guess, at this point, I will, uh, pull the board to go into non-public, pursuant to ninety-three, A, twenty-one, A three, discussions of matters, they're likely to adversely affect our picture in person, and there will be a vote after.
That will come out and take a vote after, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I mean, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Seven.
And, yes.
Bingo.
Exactly, exactly.
We are in non-public.
Thank you for coming, John Hamm.